I'd call to order the Planning and Zone Commission meeting of today, February 16th. I'd like to remind everybody present to please turn off your cell phones as they could interfere with our recording. We will start off with our public hearing. Roll call, please, Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider. Lammers.
Yeah.
Med.
Present.
Johnson.
Here.
Tomlin here. Ingram?
Present.
Hepner? Bransgard? Bransgard? Reinards?
Here.
Manus?
Here.
And Garrington?
Here.
We have a court, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. We'll start off with our one and only case. It'll be REZ 21-01, Request of Dan Lorenson on behalf of The Rock Church Ministries, Inc., to rezon parcel P 1304-02C from 2 OS, open space district, to R1, single-family residential district, to allow for the construction of a church. Matt?
Sure. So before you, on the screen is the zoning map of the surrounding area with the subject property highlighted in yellow. This is the fourth parcel south of 46th Street. To the south of the site is Goose Creek. To the east is the railroad tracks. And then to the north is the public works facility and some more industrial-type uses. This property is zoned for open space, which is consistent with the properties in the surrounding area and south, which is largely cemetery. To the east of the railroad tracks, you have largely residential. And then to the north, industrial. This map shows the land uses in the area. The subject property is shown for parks and recreation, which is consistent with the cemetery to the south and the open space areas adjacent. To the east of the railroad tracks is residential general. And then to the north, you have residential general and industry. So rezoning of the property would require an amendment to the land use map. This map just shows the general vicinity of the area. So the subject property is largely a wooded undeveloped lot with Goose Creek at the south and Deer Creek along the east of the property. You have Davenport Memorial Park and the cemeteries to the south with more industrial-type uses to the north. So the property is currently zoned for open space. This is intended to provide and protect larger open space in public recreational facilities, both outdoor and indoor, as well as for cemeteries. Open spaces may include both active as well as passive recreational areas. The applicant is proposing to rezon the property to R1, Single Family Residential District. This was recommended by city staff because it's the lowest intensity district that would allow for a church. So the purpose of the rezoning petition is to construct a church on the site. The parcel's just over three and a half acres. It's an undeveloped lot. There is quite steep topography, especially as you move further east along the site, as you get towards the 100-year floodplain, where Goose Creek and Deer Creek merge. So the more developable portion of this property is the western side. It is the fourth lot south of 46th Street. So access to 46th Street would need to extend north. There is a 15-foot access easement along the east side of the property. However, given the topography and the terrain, this really isn't a feasible option along that east lot line. On the screen before you is a concept plan provided by the applicant. The church would be going at the westernmost portion of the property, along with their parking. That way, they stay outside of the floodplain and away from some of that steeper topography. Staff is requiring that a written agreement with the adjacent property owners be provided to the commission for access out to 46th Street. So that would be a private drive that is shown on the screen. Here are some conceptual plans for what a church on the site might look like. These have been provided by the applicant, just as a general idea on how the site could be developed. It would be, I believe, a three-story church? Two-story church? In terms of public input, a sign was not placed on the property just because of weather and just general site access to the site. Public notices were sent out to adjacent property owners within 200 feet notifying them of the public hearing. At this time, staff have not received any written comments in regards to the public hearing. And we also published a notice in the Quad City Times. So a formal staff recommendation will be provided at the March 2nd Planning and Zone Commission meeting.
Thank you, Matt. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Commissioner Manus?
Yes, I'm just wondering, who owns the other two lots to the north of this, between this property and 46th?
They are under separate ownerships. I believe each of the three parcels north are under separate ownership. The one that's closest to 46th Street, actually, that parcel extends further east beyond the railroad tracks and actually abuts Eastern Avenue. And there's a home on that lot.
And those properties have had no comment about this proposal?
Staff has not received any comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Hepner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sorry it was late this evening. Help me understand the R1, Single Family designation on this. It just seemed not right to me, but...
Sure. So the R1 district does allow for places of worship. Staff felt like this was the lowest-intensity zoning district that you could rezon to, that would still be somewhat compatible with the residential just to the east of the railroad tracks. So that was the rationale behind that recommendation to R1.
Do you know what the assembly might be? How many patrons might be at the church at one given time?
At this time, we don't know.
We'll get that from the petitioner when he steps forward.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
No more questions.
Any additional questions before we hear from the petitioner? Hearing none. Would the petitioner like to step forward to the podium and explain your project and take some questions? Please identify yourself.
Josiah Dan Lorenson as the architect on the project. So as you know, we're intending to build a church on this site. It's roughly about 250 occupants, just based on a quick code analysis. So we have parking planned for that capacity. I believe it's one per 10 for that type of occupancy. So we'd be utilizing the site as a minimum footprint. Obviously, we're kind of relegated to that west side. So as far as the property owners are concerned, the two properties to the north and the one to the west are all owned by the same corporation, SCI, out of Houston, Texas, I believe. And we've been in contact with them. We actually, our schematic design was, we worked closely with them so that our access road affected their property in a manner that they found appropriate. We have a petition signed by them here, present with us now. Dan Neversen is their, I think Director of Realty is his title. So we've been in correspondence with him and that company. The property farthest to the north is Bab Living Trust. And we discovered that Mr. Bab's actually passed away about eight months ago. So we've been in contact with the executor of the estate. Estate, I believe her name is Joanne Williams, who expressed that she would be present at this meeting, but I don't see her here today, so...
Could you make sure you give a copy of that to staff before you leave?
Yep. Yep.
Commissioners, any questions from the petitioner's representative at this time? Please identify yourself and...
Commissioner Reinards? I'm sorry. My name is Jane Nichols. I live just east of this property. And my question is, what kind of road are they going to build? And if a road is built, will there be housing in this area? To me, this land is very few land and the city is designated for the wildlife. There's hardly anywhere for them to go. And this is a pre-property for these animals that live around here. So my question is, is this going to be more development north of that if they build this church?
Would you like me to...
Will there be sewer system?
There would have to be a sewer system. This is the only property that's being requested to be rezoned, so at this time, no other development would occur unless another property owner requested rezoning to do so. And then we would look at that.
And is it a paved road or is it...
It would have to be paved.
A paved road or a dirt road?
It would have to be paved.
With sewer?
That's correct. It would need, it would need all utilities connected to the facility.
If I may, the sewer is actually located south of the site.
Yes.
So it wouldn't pass from the north, 46th Street. So that line would be relatively short.
Yeah, it's actually quite a large sewer. I think it's a 36-inch sewer.
Is that the end of your questioning?
Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm going to oppose it. I don't know if I do it now or later, but that's what I'd like to oppose it.
You'll, you'll need to do that in writing to have it be recognized.
Okay. Okay.
Yep. We can, we can, in the chat, are you just calling in or are you logged in as well?
Yes, calling.
Calling in, okay. We will, can you grab her number and give her a call tomorrow? We, I think we can see your number. You don't have to say it.
I talked to Matt before.
Oh, okay.
No, that's okay. I talked to Matt before about it. He said just to call in and oppose on the phone. So that's why I'm doing it this way.
Which, Matt? You're, you're okay. Okay.
Okay, it's so noted. I appreciate that.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
So noted.
Number's not popping up.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reinards?
Thank you. I had one question. As with, with many churches that I've been familiar with over time, in some instances, there's a residency, a residence associated with the structure of the church as well. Is there any plan to have a residence in conjunction with the church and the church structure?
Uh, no.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Manus?
Thank you. I, I just wondered, is, is there a particular reason that you selected this site for the church out of what might be available in Davenport?
Pastor Dan, are you there?
Yeah.
I'm gonna let you answer that.
Yeah, we chose the site because we made a donation of the land to the church. It makes a lot of sense to us. We love the location. We've always wanted the church to be in the northern, you know, the north corridor of Davenport. So this fits with our, kind of our dream and our vision for that, for that purpose. And we just love the area. We've just, we've been there a long time and own space and lease space in that area. And we'd like to stay in that area. So I don't know if that's a good answer, but that's, that's an honest answer.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate that, Pastor. Any additional questions at this time? Hearing none?
I would like to...
I'm sorry, wait, wait, wait. Commissioner Manus?
I'm, I'm trying to turn it off.
Okay. Go ahead.
I'd like to, I would like to mention one thing.
Who?
And it's, it's nothing on it, but I'm a little confused about this Pastor Dan.
Okay, thank you.
The, the land, on, on one of the pieces of property, legal, legal piece of paper we got, it actually said that this land was zoned residential. So I, I actually bought this land quite a few years ago, probably 12, 13 years ago. Me and my family decided to make the donation to the church. We just thought it was a great piece of property. Wanted to see it used for something very positive. In, in, but anyway, so it did, it mentioned that on that paperwork, which was a little confusing. So when we, when we brought forth the plan, you know, to, to build the church there, first we had to talk to the SCI about getting permission, an easement or whatever. They've been wonderful about that. But then, that's when the zoning thing came up. So honestly, it was kind of a shocker to, to us. We'd already given the land to the church for that reason. So it was kind of a shocker to us when we found out it wasn't zoned the way we thought it was zoned. So I, that's here nor there. I didn't want to just bring that up.
Were you, was it explained to you that in 2019, January of 2019, we rewrote our entire zoning code? And we did away with some of our zoning designations, added some new zoning designations, and literally parcel by parcel throughout the entire city, through what a year and a half-long process, we, we completely replatted or re-designated all of our plats throughout the city. And, and if you purchased this before that time, it may have been zoned residential. But then, looking at the topography as, as mentioned, and the woodedness and whatnot, that it was determined that the current zoning was proper, as opposed to thinking that it would be developed residential. And that's when this took place roughly two years ago.
Chairman, I can double-check, but I'm, I'm pretty sure it was zoned for open space prior to that 2019.
It might not hurt to clarify that. Not that it's germane at the moment.
Yep.
But just for the pastor's clarification. I appreciate it.
I'm not complaining. I'm, I'm just saying that we were, I was, we were under that assumption. And so we'll, we'll do whatever we have to do, obviously, to, you know, do it the right way. But that was something that was a little confusing. And that's, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Pastor. And thank you, Laura, for diving into that. Any additional questions or concerns at this time before I ask for opposition or, or agreement from the public? Commissioners, final call. Thank you for your time. Does anybody in the audience like to speak either in favor of or in opposition to this project? Whether it be virtual or in person? Other than... And you were the one who spoke earlier?
Right.
Thank you. So noted.
Can, can you please give us a call tomorrow? Did you already have, have Matt's number? Or do you need another? Would you like us to let you? Do you need, need the number again?
Five six, is it 888-2221?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, I will call tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak?
I would like to...
Please step back.
Ask a question for the woman that...
Again, for the recording.
This is Joshua Arbeloa of the Streetline Architects about the wildlife. There are certain things we can do to mitigate the effect of, of the wildlife. So if that's something we can put in policy during construction, for instance, like permeable paving, things of that nature, if that is something that would alleviate your concern about affecting the wildlife. I know there's certain conservation site things we can do. So if that's something that you could look at or consider in reconsidering your opposition, we'd be very happy to, to do so. So just wanted to share that.
Thank you. Any additional comments? Hearing none, we will close case number REZ 21-01. It will go to staff and be back before us in a couple of weeks. Appreciate your attendance. That being said, Laura, there's no additional business that we need to discuss for a public hearing?
No, not under public hearing.
Okay, thank you. We'll close public hearing. We will now start our regular meeting agenda. Roll call, Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider. Lammers? Med? Johnson? Tomlin, present. Ingram?
Present.
Hepner?
Here.
Bransgard?
Here.
Reinards?
Here.
Manus?
Here.
Here.
And Garrington?
Sorry, muted. Here.
We have a court, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Report of city council activity?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Laura. Secretaries, report?
Move report.
Second.
The report's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Hearing none, it will stay as printed. Cop plan, anything, Laura?
Nothing to report.
Thank you. Zoning activity, we do not have anything tonight. We do have a couple items in subdivision activity. I'll turn it over to Commissioner Manus.
Thank you. Our first item is case number ROW 20-02, being the request of Palmer College of Chiropractic to vacate a portion of alley in block 96 of Leclerc's 8th Edition. Staff is recommending approval with a number of conditions, and I so move.
Second.
Case number ROW 20-02 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Staff, I'm not sure. Laura?
Yep. Okay. So as you recall, this was part of a larger case that involved two other right-of-ways that decisions were made on at the last meeting on February 2nd. The remaining one is the darker blue to the north. Purpose of rezoning is to facilitate further development and implementation of Palmer's Master Campus Plan. The, the one that is still remaining for decision tonight would be needed to do their recreation athletic field. Notices had been sent in tandem with the 500-foot notice area, at which exceeded the 200-foot normal notification area. Neighborhood meeting was held on January 11th. 20 people were in attendance. And then the public hearing notice was published in the Quad City Times. We know, we received no written protests from that. As a reminder, here's the, the, the new changes to the campus master plan that are in process of being approved at the city council level at this time. On the left, under letter F, is the athletic field that it, that is in the plans where the vacation of the alley is required. As you recall, Palmer has proposed providing an ingress egress easement from the remaining alley that would stay as public right-of-way in order to ensure access to 12th Street. If the vacation was approved, this would be reflected in a future subdivision. I, infrastructure had been identified in both alleys. They had already agreed to vacate the infrastructure out of block 89, which is the one to the south, when we were, when we met on February 2nd. Since then, the utilities have agreed that relocation of the infrastructure into a utility easement that runs from the alleyway north to 12th Street would be sufficient for their concerns. So that's kind of, as a recap, this was the one that was tabled from February 2nd. The utilities are okay with relocating infrastructure into a newly identified utility easement. Therefore, staff recommends that the Planning and Zone Commission accept the listed findings that the rights, the right-of-way vacation would not impact adjacent property owners with the proposed ingress and egress easement. A utility would preserve the rights for utility providers maintaining utilities. And then the conditions on that is a 15-foot utility easement to be dedicated for the preservation and maintenance of utilities. And that an ingress egress easement be provided from the alley to 12th Street. That is all I have.
Thank you, Laura. Commissioners, any questions at this time? Hearing none. Is there anybody that would like to speak either in favor or opposition to this petition? Seeing none, final call for questions. Roll call, please, Commissioner Tomlin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Schneider?
Yeah.
Lammers?
Yeah.
Med? Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Hepner?
Yes.
Bransgard?
Yes.
Reinards?
Yes.
Manus?
Yes.
And Garrington?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Commissioner Manus?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our second item is case number F 21-01, Chris Townsend on behalf of Don Shury for Final Platte, Westlake Business Park 4th Edition on 3.2 acres, being a replat of Lot 2, Westlake Business Park 3rd Edition, located at 7630 Lewis Rich Court, containing two industrial lots. Staff has recommended that the Planning Commission forward this to the city council with a recommendation subject to conditions, and I so move for discussion.
Second.
Case number F 21-01 has been moved and seconded for discussion. Laura?
All right. This is a fairly simple subdivision. There's, it is currently zoned I1 for light industrial as well as industry for, for, on the future land use map. Largely no concerns from staff, other than just making notes on the maintenance and who's responsible for the detention and then updating the maintenance repair agreement. So staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Laura. Is the petitioner president like to make a presentation? Please step forward.
Mike Richmond with Townsend Engineering, representing Don Shury. Yes, a very simple subdivision. It's designed to accommodate separate ownership of the buildings, essentially splitting the lot down the middle. The two owners will be jointly responsible for the stormwater detention and equally responsible. And we've addressed all the other concerns. We've filed the maintenance repair agreement with the city as well.
Okay. Petitioner, commissioners, any questions of the petitioner? Final call for questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Okay, who's this?
Commissioner Lammers.
Go ahead, Susan.
Okay, thank you. I just wondered if on the recommendation number one, it says a note shall be added to the plat listing the parties responsible for maintenance of the stormwater basin? And, and I heard the answer to that. But do we always have that terminology? Is it so generic at this point?
Yes.
Or should it specify who the, the people, the parties will be?
Yep, we keep it fairly generic as ownership changes over time. So it's, the plat reflects the owner, the individual lot. So basically, that note, when it's generic like that, just says whoever owns new lot 1 and, and new lot 2 will have joint ownership of the maintenance. So, yeah, we, we do try to keep it relatively general. So, yeah, we, we do try to keep it relatively generalized. The, and that's when the, the-
I just want to make sure.
Yeah. The, the, the maintenance and repair agreement, it, that gets recorded at the county, that's where it gets into more specifics.
I just didn't know if we were inviting problems or not.
Sure.
That was my question, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lammers.
The, the Mike Richmond here again. There's also more specific language in the attorney documents that are filed accompanying the plat that specify the um responsibilities of all parties involved. And if there is a change in ownership, then it's passed on with the, as, with the conveyance, so.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Hearing none, thank you. Roll call, please, Commissioner Tomlin.
Lammers?
Yeah.
Johnson?
Yes.
Tomlin, yes. Hepner?
Yes.
Right, right over there? Branska, Branska.
Branska, yeah.
Reinhardt?
Here.
Manus?
Yes.
Garrington?
Yes.
And Schneider?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Tomlin. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Manus. That would conclude our regular meeting. Any future business? Laura?
Um, nothing submitted at this time, although I am anticipating one soon.
Okay, communications? Other business? Anybody?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Not yet.
Okay, I would like to thank everybody for their participation and being available tonight. Please try to stay warm. I know I woke up this morning with a house that was 52 degrees. So, motion?
To adjourn, motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chairman, if you don't have anything else this evening, I'd like to motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, signify by aye.
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 Opposed? Hearing none, we are officially adjourned. Again, thank you for your participation.